Good morning, it's nine thirty. I'd like to call the April or the June thirteenth County Council meeting to order. CIO, you'd like to make an introduction?
Mr. Reeve, Members Council, my pleasure to introduce today the interim Director of Infrastructure, Mr. Mike Kuzio. Mike has over thirty years of experience. He was a General Manager of Infrastructure for the City of Edmonton. Worked with Councilmen's Past Fraternity Alberta Transportation. So I know that you'll have lots of things in common and to discuss. But Mike's been here for a couple of weeks now. He came in two days prior to Robert leaving and did transition handoff and that went very smooth. And I'm most appreciative of having someone with so much experience here to help us in the interim. So a warm welcome to Mike.
Welcome, Mike. The first item of business is the approval of the agenda. So items that are on the list for discussion. Are item number two. We need to delete item number four. Mr. Uber is unable to attend today due to a family emergency. And I was disappointed because I was looking forward to introducing you to him when I, when I first met him at the North Alberta Leaders Meeting in Grand Prairie in February. His presentation struck a chord with me and I immediately thought about how that could be applied, that technology in areas like Skeleton Lake and Wandering River. So. That's coming back. He'll come back at a future meeting either in June or July, end of June. So four is a deletion, five point one is on for discussion, five point two, five point six, all of number six. Seven point two, seven point six, we need to delete seven point one one. Eight point one, nine point one. And then all of number twelve. The admin or the reports, I'm wondering if the folks who have reports in there have want to add a comment to them. Counselors Cromwell, Anderson. Yeah. Okay, so eleven point one B's on the list. Other items to add or delete, counselor Mins then Holland.
I was gonna go eleven point one.
Eleven point one like.
Uh, F.
Yeah.
Sorry. And. Eleven point one AF.
Couple of questions about that. Is that, does that cover it?
Uh, no, yeah, go ahead.
You might have one more, Counselor Holland.
Um, five point one.
Five point one's already on.
Thank you. I missed putting that one. Five point four.
Five point four, okay.
Uh, seven point three.
Seven point three.
Seven point five.
Seven point five.
Seven point nine.
Seven point nine.
Seven ten.
Seven ten.
Uh, eleven point one H.
Eleven point one H.
And eleven point one R, please.
Sorry, eleven point one R.
Hey, thank you.
Counselor Wallach or Chomzik. Eleven point one U, coming Community Support Services, Counselor Cromwell. Counselor. Captain Panic, Gurlik or Anderson? Counselor Anderson?
Almost to approve as amended.
Mister, Mister Reeve, could you go through that?
I will go through it again, yep.
Thank you very much.
Move the motion. Counselor Mins, did you have any follow-ups? I'll go through them and then just follow down your list and maybe it'll come. So we have item number two. Delete item number four. We have item number five point one, five point two, five point four. Um, five point six, item number six, item number seven point two. Item number seven point three, item number seven point five, item number seven point nine, seven point ten. Delete seven point one one. Item number eight point one. Item number nine point one, eleven point one B, F, H. R, U, and AF. And then all of number twelve, Counselor Holland and then Mins.
Thank you. Just wanted to confirm five point three, seven point six was there.
So five point three.
Yes.
Five point three is not on.
Okay.
So we're gonna add five point three.
Thank you.
And seven point six.
Correct.
Is on, yeah.
Thank you.
The customers.
Let's throw on seven point eight.
Seven, seven. Does everybody feel comfortable with that or I happy to go through it one more time? Okay, Counselor Anderson has moved. We approve the agenda as amended. On the question of the adoption, the motion to approve the agenda as amended, all those in favor. That is carried nine and zero. The first item of business. Is five point one. Is there? To open the discussion, is there anyone willing to move a motion regarding five point? This is the Internet and Computer Use Policy. Counselor Mins, I'll move the motion. It's Councilman's has moved the recommended motion on five point one. Is there any discussion? Counselor Holland.
Thank you. Um, I was just reading through this and I just had a quick question. I wanted to make sure that. We're all current with the current technology, current information, current terminology, not technology, current terminology and whatnot within. But more than anything, I wanted to ask, it says all social media pages that represent Athabasca County. What is the definition of pages that represent Athabasca County?
Could, could, that's an admin question, maybe someone from admin could. Ms. Blair?
That refers to the original motion, CC twenty-two, four seventy-eight. There was discussion at that time, I believe Rod Rizling was the CIO. And if there was discussion in regards to that at the council meeting and they had. Council had discussed between yourselves to that those social media pages that. I guess are, what would you say the word is?
Well, I think in the specific case it was, we had. You hear me? Um, it was based around fire department membership pages that were representing the county. And I agree with you, the whole policy approach should probably be updated, but we were waiting for Communications Coordinator. Um, so anything that's acting on behalf of the county. And do we have a, may I?
Yeah.
Do we have a list of those pages? I don't know, to be honest. Okay. Okay. Um, and I guess the second, if we're working on it, I guess I'm not prepared to pass this through. I'm thinking that maybe we should be looking at. Moving this on to a policy review to make sure that we capture everything because I also wonder if this policy applies to board and committee members at large.
Other. Other comments?
So we don't wait.
Do you have other, we'll, we'll circle the discussion because I, I don't know that it does.
Okay, so I guess I'll just finish by saying I'm not prepared to vote on this today that I think we need to table this to a policy review.
Okay. Um, other comments, Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you. I actually had a similar question. What is all included in that? Now, will that include, for example, a counselor's Facebook page? Could that include? An admin person's LinkedIn account? This are all social media pages that represent Athabasca County and how are they covered in this policy?
I think there's a section in the current policy that talks specifically about counselors, individual accounts and stuff.
Page twenty.
Page twenty, yeah. So that's contained within the current policy. Again, I do support that this should probably be reviewed in whole. This was a really outstanding action item that we wanted to take care of and probably prompt this discussion to. You know, if there was any recommendations for admin to look at the policy further.
Other comments?
I wanted to, when I read through it, I had a couple of notes. Specifically, I, I think that the whole thing needs a total overhaul, but I also feel like it would be important to pass the. The minor fix we've done to it today and then subsequently send it on for a complete overhaul through the Policy Committee. I, there's, you know, areas like in the page twenty of your agenda where there's the language around the use of social media. And, and the official presence of counselors and others. And I think there's room in there to add other language like all posts should encourage respect, public respect for the county, its policy bylaws, council and decisions of council. Like I, I think. We need to move it forward a little bit more. But for me, those are things that could happen through a total rewrite and really the, for me, the question in front of us is we've asked admin to. Add this one block of language to it, to patch it. Um, I don't think it's inconsistent to say we're gonna patch that, that problem and then also send it on for a complete overhaul. Subsequently. Other comments for anyone who hasn't spoken? Counselor Chenik?
I think without a doubt, there's definitely some clarification that needs to be done. So just for my own clarity, when I read. Only the, only have active staff members of the organization to post and manage applicable social media pages. Does that mean? Individual fire department pages would the chief or whatever have that access to post for? I don't know, recruitment, that type of thing?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, for anyone who hasn't spoken, we're good. On the question of the adoption of the motion, if you're ready for the question, I think one surround is probably sufficient. Kate, you've had it. Go ahead.
I like to amend the motion then to bring this back to the policy for meeting that we will have. Between August and September. As I'm confident there will be one around that timeframe.
So to a policy meeting, could we say to a policy meeting after August first?
After August first before November first.
So Counselor Cromwell's proposed an amendment to bring this back to a policy meeting after August first and before November first. Given that there's new items on the table. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question, the question on the adoption of the amendment to amend the motion to bring. So I guess I want to clarify, Counselor Cromwell, are you proposing to? The original motion is to adopt the computer use policy. Are you proposing to? Adopt it, but then kick it forward for a complete overhaul at the Policy Committee?
Correct.
Okay, so that we handle that right? Um, on the question, the adoption of the motion to direct administration to bring back this item to a policy review meeting between August first and November first. All those in favor? That's carried nine and zero, the amendment is adopted on the question of the original motion. Uh, to adopt policy four one one zero, the Internet and Computer Use Policy with the amendments to include the two members of admin or administrators on social media pages. To represent Athabasca County, that only current staff members of the organization are allowed to post and manage the pages and further to. Direct administration to bring this back to a policy meeting after August first and before November first for a more thorough review, all those in favor. Opposed? The motion is adopted, seven and two. Item five point two, is there anybody willing to move the, the motion as presented? Counselor Cromwell has moved that we register the county register tax forfeiture on title for tax rolls as printed near agenda ending in two four two and two four three. Discussion. I had a comment and that's why I put that on. Counselor Gurlik, the floor is yours. Can you put your mic on and then would you explain why you want to do that?
Because I think there's. Testing, yeah. I think there's a. A little bit of progress. Happening in the community to deal with that property. You know, to discuss it in full, should be enclosed, but. Uh, rather than do that, I would just save for getting extended one month, see how things play out.
Would there be harm in that? You, you've made a motion to table, so that's, that's an undebatable motion. Counselor. Uh, Gurlik has made a motion to table the registration of a tax forfeiture on the title of those two tax rules ending in two four two and two four three. All those in favor?
Oh, so just point of order, Mr. Reeve. Can we have that motion specify when it would come back? Sir, may I, may I suggest July twenty seventh?
It's perfectly. Okay. No. So Counselor Gurlik has moved to table this motion to July twenty seventh council meeting for decision. All those in favor? Three, four, five opposed? Okay, um, sorry, opposed? So there's three, so the count would be six and three, the motion is adopted to table to July twenty seventh. The next item is five point three, Counselor Holland, you added this to the agenda?
Thank you. I just noticed on the, on page thirty, there was some dates that were scratched out that are not available, of course, for our neighbors. But I'm also asking if we can scratch out the fourteenth of September being that there is Athabasca Landing Trail Tour that will run over two days and that's the thirteenth and fourteenth of September.
Okay, um, so. So you would like to direct the administration to propose two to three evening dates to the town and village for a tri-council meeting excluding the fourteenth of September?
Yes, please.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption, the motion to direct administration to propose two to three meeting dates for the town and village for a tri-council meeting and to exclude. The fourteenth of September, all those in favor? There is none opposed, the motion is carried nine and zero, the motion is adopted. Counselor Holland, you would, regarding item five point four, you added that to the agenda? Do you have a motion you'd like to pose?
Um. I would like to make some amendments, I guess. The recommendation mentions policy be approved as recommended by the ASB. Um, however, I'd like to see a few more amendments. How would you like to work that?
So you'd like to make a motion to approve the policy with the following amendments?
Thank you very much.
There we go.
All right, if I may.
Absolutely, it's gorgeous.
Just trying to read for, you know, looking at it from a public's point of view and. Reading it to how it would make sense. So the first item, first line, the Agricultural, Agricultural Service Board sees it necessary to respond and take action. For me, when I read that, it looks like the ASB Board are the people that are going to be doing the responding and taking the action rather than the agricultural department. So I'm wondering. If we may, if, if council is approval, the Agricultural Service Board see it necessary. And then add for Athabasca County Administration to respond and take action to control flooding, et cetera. Um, in item number one. Um, the Agricultural Services Board will initiate flood control measures on its own. I'm assuming that that should be Agricultural Services Department will initiate that.
The board, the egg services boards are. Governed by a separate piece of legislation and they can initiate weed control, beaver control.
Okay.
Other items like that, so they, the board itself can. Make things happen within their budget.
Okay, but that they're not the actual ones responding, it's somebody else that's responding?
I, I think.
It just seems really confusing to me.
Regularly. Have bylaws that kind of say the county will do this, but really it's not, you know, the county itself doesn't. Is a, is a corporate body, the, the Egg Services Board is a corporate body, so they take action through.
Okay.
Through another mechanism would be the way that I would.
Okay, well.
Probably interpret that if that.
Appreciate that, yeah. No, I appreciate that, that makes sense. So the only other item then I wanted to discuss was number five. That each subsequent request of that same calendar year, and these are for charges, it changes will and. Adds May, and I was wondering what the reason for giving that discretion instead of making it concrete that there is a fifty dollar charge.
Uh, CIO, were you at the Egg Services Board meeting and can you explain?
I think the, uh, Mr. Reeve Members Council, the discussion of the Egg Service Board was. The reason for the change from will to may is that there have been circumstances where. The impact has been on county infrastructure. And so to provide some flexibility to the staff to determine whether or not. The actual event itself is going to do harm to county infrastructure. Then we would wa- waive that particular charge. And so it, if it's will and similar as to shell, then we have to make the charge even though we're trying to protect. Uh, county infrastructure as opposed to serving individual needs.
Okay, may we reflect that in this particular section so that it's not? Unclear, it, it's for that reason that you just described, other than, you know, because quite often. We can look at it as being, somebody may be deciding, oh, we're not going to charge this guy, but we're going to charge this guy. So. If it's strictly just because it's going to affect county infrastructure, I'm wondering if we can have that reflected in number five?
Do you have, where do you propose?
Uh, well, since we just learned about this, each subsequent request of the same calendar year may be charged a fifty dollar fee for service. I don't really know how to put that in there at this point because the word may, right? So. Um, one will be charged a fifty dollar fee of service unless it impacts.
Would you be open to just trusting the admin to make, like? Given the scale of.
Okay.
We, like, and I, this is a question, not a. Would it be reasonable in your mind to, to just give them the discretion and trust that they don't just give it away to their friends, but that they, or feel more comfortable trying to, because?
Uh, number six, it, it kind of does. It, as you mentioned, Counselor Wallach, however. I'm finding that if our policies are not clear and concise, we tend to get into these gray areas that cause problems. So. I would definitely be in favor of making a change to number five if it's strictly for county infrastructure reasons.
Counselor Wallach. Number seven also speaks to it, flood control.
So I, I think.
Yes, but it doesn't explain, I'm sorry.
Maybe Counselor Holland, the answer then, because the wording is something that would be difficult for us to bang out, like here right now. It may be reasonable to, um, because you haven't, you know, the motion isn't. Doesn't belong to the table yet because you're still articulating it, um, to amend it, to, to send it back for revisions to. To reflect those comments.
Absolutely.
Would that be procedurally? Okay. Um, so I just want to clarify with you the motion and then, then I'll open the floor to discussion. Um, you, you've expressed a couple of items, um, on the first one, the Egg Services Board sees it necessary to respond. And, and then you wondered about adding Athabasca, for Athabasca County to respond. Are you okay with leaving it as the Egg Services?
Yes.
Given that they.
Yes, after that explanation, thank you, yes.
So the, the, the only material change that I had note of is just to rework the wording around number five. To clarify the circumstances where we will and will not charge.
Correct. Though I have one more question.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, and that's in number one, and it mentions. That only flooding is affecting county roads or infrastructure. And then it says costs encouraged remedy flooding affecting county roads or infrastructure shall be charged to Public Works Road Maintenance. Will there ever be an oper- a, a situation where? The infrastructure that's being impacted has nothing to do with public works, road maintenance and may have to come out of a different budget?
Mister Reeve, Members Council, now that I could think of, because usually infrastructure in the broad sense refers to public infrastructure. So it might even be a building.
Right.
Or a trail.
Right.
And all of those costs are covered under the infrastructure budget.
Under road maintenance specific?
It's under road maintenance as, as a general term, but Counselor Mins probably has a better explanation than I.
There's a, there's another, uh.
If, just only in terms of explanation, because then I'll repeat the motion.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But there's another line item there under infrastructure, under Public Works that have beaver control. And work hand in hand with ASB Agricultural Service Board. To split that up, that there's any infrastructure issues regarding beaver control that gets charged to that. Even some of the, even some of the, the hours of the guys going out and, and looking after this will get charged to infrastructure and. Because it's got to usually do with roads. So, okay.
So maybe.
That I clarity construct.
Well, sure. I'm curious then, maybe if we should have charged Public Works Road Maintenance or respective department. Yeah, and then I'm good, thank you.
So, um, I, I'm going to read the motion back and then looking for a discussion, Counselor Holland, please confirm that I have your intentions correct. Counselor Holland has moved to refer the Beaver Flood Control Policy thirty-eight twenty-five back to the Agricultural Service Board. To add clarification regarding section five, uh, where the county will or will not charge. For that service. That's one, and also to include the comments at the end of point one or respective department, the words.
Thank you.
Yep. That, does anybody understand the motion? We want it again. If not, Counselor Wallach, your hand is up, floors you.
So. Number one, number six, number seven, speak how the charges are. Laid for payment. So if it's gonna affect county infrastructure, it just goes right to them. So if a landowner comes to request something and it's on their property, but it's gonna affect county roads, it just gets charged back to Public Works. If there are other requests of flooding on private property, it's charged to the landowner. So I, to me, the policy is fairly clear if you read it as a full.
Counselor Mins, your hand is up.
Uh, flipped it from will to may, just, just to have a little bit of, uh, consideration of, of. If it, if we enter in once to take care of a beaver dam or something like that for the landowner, um. And all of a sudden. We don't have to come back there for a few months, um, and we got to enter in again just before, just before, uh. Let, let's say, uh, freeze up. That's the second time we're going in there. So that's a discretion. We can make that discretion of, of whether we enter in at that time or, or whether we charge at that time or not. What may happen at times is all of a sudden you get a disgruntled landowner and he's fawning every couple of weeks wanting. Us to come in there and, and he starts using that, uh, well, it's the infrastructure thing. And that way we can, we, uh, they have the discretion also to charge for that, for them time. So it, so it maybe cut back a little bit. That's why. Excuse me. We changed from will to may is to have discretion. As the employee going out there to be able to charge or not charge.
Okay, further comments? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Um, I think if we can trust the staff here to deal with dynamite and heavy equipment to remove beaver dams. We can give them the discretion on whether or not they're going to charge fifty dollars to be there. Or whether that's going to be included in our budget. I just, I really think we're splitting hairs here and. They've taken on the responsibility. I don't think that's a bad thing.
Further comments, Counselor Gurlik?
I think in some instances, the beaver dam causing flooding, uh, the person whose land it's actually on. May not consider that to be damaging, but it affects somebody further up. So you, it's hard to expect. Someone to pay for a damage removal in someone else's property. So I think with the discretion may, it gives the officers the opportunity to go in and, and go to the dam and not argue who's paying for it.
Anybody else? Um, I, before we give the final word to the move or the motion, I. I'm going to vote against the motion specifically because I've. I'm going to vote against the motion uh specifically because I feel like it's adequate in its current form. Um, with the discretion that's there, and uh, so I, I'd be. Happy to not send it back to S B and to just move it forward as as is. Now, eh, I'm going to give Counselor Holland as a mover the final word. Is there anybody who hasn't spoken that wants to, which would be? Don't, Counselor Holland.
Thank you. Now that we've had a second um explanation, it's more than just county infrastructure. So splitting hairs or not, it uh leaves room for favoritism and it leaves room for unfair um action. And that's what policies are for, so that we remove anything that can possibly get into that unfair lane. So I don't agree with that at all. And I think that policies, when we have these and they bring them forward. They may make sense to the people who have been discussing them and applying to them, but. When the pu- the public come and look at them, they need to have that explanation as if they're not sitting on that board. So. Um, as far as I'm concerned, the changes are extremely important to make and to reconsider the word may. Um, I cannot support. That opportunity for favoritism.
Okay, so on the question of the adoption of the motion to refer this back to uh to send this back to A S B for additional clarification regarding. Line five and the reworking of the language around where the county will or will not charge. For this service, all those in favor? All those opposed? The count is two and seven, the motion is defeated. Is there another motion that someone like to make, Council Wallack?
Uh, to approve as presented, please.
Counsel Wallack has made a motion to approve the policy eight one one five as presented. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Cromwell.
Thank you. Um. Perhaps through the chair, if it would be appropriate, we have a. Intern uh Director of Infrastructure in our room who has a wielding of experience. Can maybe get his take on how that's written and how he finds that based on his level of expertise.
Yes, cuz you, yes, if you'd like to address it, we'll find a way to. Get one of his microphones to you.
I was, I was hoping to sit silent on this uh, the discussion seemed to be going fine. Um, but. But Counselor Holland makes a a valid point about the opportunity for favoritism when you say may. And I think you can fix it quite easily by saying uh will be charged fifty dollars for the service. Um, or at the discretion of the county manager, the, the uh chief administrative officer. Then he has to explain when there's an exception and why, and otherwise administration carries on charging fifty dollars every time. Okay, the discretion can be delegated to the Director of uh Infrastructure, to the Manager of Public Works, but. If, if you just end that sentence, but will be charged or at the discretion of the I, the C O. I think you've covered it without any favoritism and and the buck stops there.
Thank you. Further comments? Counsel Holland, um, I'm wondering if you want to propose an amendment to add the words or at the discretion of the C O or designate.
Absolutely, and thank you very much for that.
Um, so Council Holland has made a motion to amend the original motion to add the language or at the discretion of the C O or designate. To line five. To chase or to will be charged a fee fifty dollar fee for service or at the discretion of the C O or design. Is there any further discussion on this? So on the question, if you're ready for the question, the question, the adoption of the amendment to add the language. Um, will be charged a fifty dollar fee or at the discretion of the C O or designate, all those in favor? Opposed? You were opposed, so the count is eight and one, the amendment is adopted. On the, are you ready for the adoption of the original motion? Sorry, the question in the original motion. Um, just cuz you, director.
It, it's very risky for me to say this at this time because I wish I'd had a chance to talk to uh the C O. Prior to the meeting, I, I, I was wondering when I read this thing, why we specify an agricultural services department? When I don't think that even exists on the org chart and the I C A O is going to initiate. Changes to the org chart which may change the name of it entirely. Um. Can, can you leave that blank at least for, you know, until the next meeting or allow administration to insert here the name of the department?
Uh, Counselor Wallack, can you address that since you're at the?
I feel like there is a department because we have to have one.
It, it, there, there isn't a director, but there, maybe it's fair to think there's a department in some fashion.
And maybe if you just call it agricultural services, then there's, it could be a department section, whatever it may be. It's, it's a minor amendment. Just.
Counsel Wallack, you okay with amendment like that? Uh, Counselor Min, you're nodding. You want to make that amendment? I'm, I'm going to let Counselor Min's amended because I'm not really sure about a multiple amendments in a row from the same counselor, counsel Holland, if you're okay with that.
I'm okay with that. Yes, I just am really concerned about where the budget is going to be hit for this road maintenance. I, I.
That's probably separate. We'll bring that up in the main discussion. Counselor Minz, are you uh willing to make amendment to remove the word department?
Yes, I am. Uh, remove department and just put agriculture service.
It, so Council Minz has moved an amendment to remove the word uh department from line two and line. Seven. And line five and line four. Basically to replace the words agricultural services department with agricultural services throughout the policy.
Yep.
Ms. Blair, can you reword it that way? An amendment to replace words egg services department with egg services? Okay, is everybody clear on that amendment, tweaking of the words? It's the second amendment. On the question of the adoption of the amendment to remove the words agricultural services department and replace them with agricultural services, all those in favor. That is carried, comes opposed? Which way you avoid? That is carried nine and zero, the motion is adopted. I know it's quite engaging discussion. Can you be to? Nudge it away to you next time. Okay, now, uh, we have a main motion on the floor. Um, which is to adopt the policy uh as recommended with the two amendments. One of them is to replace the words egg services department with egg services. Second amendment is to. Add to line five, uh, will be charged fee of fifty dollars or at the discretion of the C A, C A or designate. On that question, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and one, and the motion is adopted. Counseluric. Yeah, I think we should be able to have that flexibility. Is there anyone at the table? That objects to amending the, but the approval to include five point five for discussion? Given that no one objects, Counsel Gerlick, can we please consider uh council at five point five was in the original? Uh, items for discussion, Counsel Gerlick, the floor is yours.
Good, thank you. Uh, in reading through the policy and whatever with uh with the members at large. There's nothing in there that indicates whether they are volunteers or whether they're compensated or. Or.
Just before you do that, are you, you're willing to move the motion and then want to discuss it?
Yeah, I get, well, I.
Okay, I guess I. Question, okay, um, in terms of the volunteers, the egg services board, I think that is covered by a different policy, uh, the members at large. We do have a policy that that uh pays them a stipend for being present. Uh, Counselor, um, Wallack has hinted that it's policy eighty two oh six. Which uh policy eighty two oh six appointments to committees and boards applies to all members at large. That's part I under number one of the policy.
Because I was just wondering, like, some members of, like, the F C S S are are not compensated for. For the time last.
Um, the, the.
And, and I, actually, I would just ask that by one of the, one of the uh members.
I think the, the difference with boards, so this is um, a board that is entirely. Could manage by the county. F C S S has members who are appointed by other municipalities like the town and the town members. Are covered by the town's policy on compensation, which uh is usually a state dinner once per year. And so they, the, the two municipalities pay differently, the village of Boyle. Um, they have a different policy, so they, they pay a, you know, different rate and different mileage to their members of of boards, and I. I think that was kind of a. I think we talked about that briefly at dinner with the town and village the, a couple of weeks ago, the idea of trying to have our C O's. Coordinate those, those policies so that there is a degree of equity across members at large. Uh, eighty two oh six. It's um. So now, are you willing to move the motion? Counselor Gerlick has moved the policy eight one one five, the egg services board committee be approved as recommended by the egg services board discussion. Cromwell.
Thank you, uh, through the chair to Counselor Gerlock, currently reading eighty two oh six. And I do not see where it is indicated in there that they are paid a stipend, just for your information here. I'm gonna, I'm a little bit quicker on my computer than you are. Strike that from the record.
I'm going to ask admin if they want to enlighten us on, I, because usually, as is the case with our policies, it's not always just a single one. It's kind of a web of overlapping policies of government most things, C O.
Mr. Reeve Members Council, I'm advised by my executive assistant. The council passed a resolution in twenty nineteen that establishes the honorary and for. Uh, board members and that honorary was established at two hundred dollars per meeting. And unless council goes back and amends that resolution or brings forward a new resolution. That stands, so based on the resolution, that's uh the basis for the authority. To pay honorary to board members.
No wonder we didn't remember it. Um, is there any further discussion, Counselor Holland?
I'm sorry, what was the resolution number?
I don't have the resolution number, but it was established, I believe, in two thousand eighteen or two thousand and nineteen. Um, that rate is included on your boards and committee listings that I do hand out. It's on the last page. Um, if you would like the resolution number, I could track it down.
Uh, Counsel Walk.
This is one amendment, uh, to change egg services department to egg services.
Counsel Wallack has uh made an amendment to replace the words egg services department with agricultural services. On the question of the adoption of the amendment, I think that's pretty straightforward. Is there any, um, all those in favor? That is carried, the amendment is, is adopted nine and zero. On the question of the main motion, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question on the question of the adoption of the motion to approve uh policy eight one one five with the amendment of the language around egg services. Department to egg services, all those in favor? The motion, uh, that count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Five point uh six is Community Transportation Committee. Um, Counselor Holland, I, I added that to the agenda because uh I thought there were a couple of amendments that I wanted to discuss. But do you want to move the main motion first?
Thank you. Yes, I'll move the um, the recommendation to be approved as recommended.
Um, now, speaking to the motion, uh. Uh, it's clear that, you know, a lot of work and thought has gone into this, and I applaud the committee. And the efforts with the, the town and the village and those there. I, I think this is significantly improved, but I would propose to council that we should. Consider referring this back to the Transportation Committee to make a couple of additional amendments to improve the function of the policy. Not the, not the concept, but just the mechanics of it. And I think that it's important to refer it back to the committee to make the changes so that it can then flow out to the town and village for their agreement before it comes back here for final approval. I wanted to propose the following things to you. Firstly, I'm wondering if as a general kind of order of process. As we review policies, we should consider renumbering them with a process that uh creates headings and subheadings so that there is only. Uh, e- every, every heading has a number so that you can, you can refer down by decimals to exactly what line in the policy we're talking about. So, um, you know, as an example, we have duties of powers and committees, number one, and we have finances, number one. We should be able to say part one point one. Point A, to be really clear where it is, and we can't do that here. So just mechanically, it might be better. And I know we haven't done that with the others, but this is where I'd made the note. Under the duties of uh the committee's part six. That item is repeated in the last section, changes to policy, and I proposed to you the appropriate place for that is really to leave that language under duties of committees. But that in the section at the end, uh, changes to policy, it'd be amended. Either, well, either deleted entirely or amended to include language similar to. Um, while acknowledging the county councils ultimately responsible for this policy. The views of our partner municipalities is communicated through their representatives to the committee and its recommendations will be taken into consideration. So that doesn't have a lot of weight in terms of what, it doesn't bind the final decisions of our council, but it, it provides a. Uh, written acknowledgement to us and a reminder to us and acknowledgement to our partners that we do respect their views and we'll, we'll think of them as. Um, under part two finances, uh, the fourth word in there, three should probably be deleted. There may be more than three partnering municipalities. And I would additionally propose that the minimum charge that is referenced in that line be set in this policy. So it can be agreed upon once and not annually. I think I would suggest the mechanics of trying to work that out annually. Between the three municipalities or more will be very cumbersome and will delay budget process where if we can come to an agreement upfront. Um, then over time, as the committee sees the need to increase that amount, they can come back with proposals to change it, but. Like, I can see them coming to a reasonable number once and it lasting for two or three or four years. Um, so that I, I would propose committee should recommend that. Under the duties and powers, there's the word uh put in part three of that exclusively. Um, the committee shall have the exclusive authority. I just, I think we don't really need the word exclusive. They, they just have the authority. But it's still in there, that's why I was, okay, and, and I, I brought that because it wasn't in red and I just wasn't sure what was happening. Um, and then the committee structure piece, the very first one, I'm sorry, I worked from back to front, um, hope you can follow that logic. Uh, the, the committee should be comprised of not more than one member from each of Athabasca County, the village of Boyle, the town of Athabasca. When participating in the program and one member representing all of the participating summer villages to a maximum of four members. The way it's written here today, um, since the committee's got three voting members appointed annually at the org meetings of the cooperating municipalities. But if a summer village comes in, now we've got three members and four partners, who gets to appoint one? And so just, just adding the clarity to say. That's different. I would also suggest that there, I mean, I've, I've separated it to one, in my thinking, one member from all the summer villages specifically. Because they are unlike any other municipality. People who don't live there get to vote, people who don't live there get to influence it, and we cannot, under any circumstances, have people who are not residents of our region. Controlling a board that affects our residents. So, um, it's reasonable to control lie with the three. Main municipalities and the smaller ones get, get that a little bit, that are elected by full-time local residents. And Counsel Holland, I see you're reaching for your mic. I'm just going to make sure those are all the things I had, and then. If you saw my writing, you'd have to take a sip. And, and otherwise, I mean, the notes I had on the sheet really said these are good changes and it's, it's really good progress. So Counsel Holland is the mover. I don't know if you want to.
Oh, wait.
Wait.
Yep, thanks.
Other comments? Counsel Holland.
That was a lot. Um, would you be willing to forward your, okay, recommended changes? That would be awesome. Um, when you mentioned the minimum, can you, there is a specific. Um, definition for that, but it's up and coming to discuss. Uh, do you want to discuss that now or?
I, I'm, I mean. You know, if council wants to discuss it, we have time. Um, I personally have faith that the committee can come up with a number and come back to us. And I don't personally feel the need to be involved in micromanaging them.
I, I think you probably want to hear about it for sure, and I can bring that up. No, I want to hear about it for sure. Um, it is coming up when, when we go to discuss the reports. Um, I, I can discuss that then.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, in the. Um, but yeah, in the meantime, if maybe.
I'll I'll ask somebody else to make a motion to just refer it back to the transportation committee with those amendments, which is a will override your motion to approve and. Um, Council Anderson.
I'll move to refer the policy back to the community transportation committee or further review and amendment.
And I will share those notes, Council Anderson has moved to refer this back to the transportation committee. Uh, referral motions are non-debatable, is there, if you're ready for the question, all those in favor? That is, uh, nine and zero and that referral is adopted, I will share those notes for your consideration. Again, because I I think there's a lot of good work. What does this say? We are. Approaching the first full hour, does anybody feel a need for a break for conveniences, let's take, uh. Let's reconvene at ten thirty and, uh. Or recess. All right, it's half past ten, I'd like to reconvene the council meeting. We are at item six point one, Council Anderson, you hand us up.
I'd like to move the recommended motion under item six point one to give first reading to bylaw zero zero five two zero two three. And to direct administration to schedule and advertise a public hearing on July twenty seven.
Counselor Anderson has made a motion to give first reading to bylaw zero zero five two zero two three. And to direct administration to schedule and advertise a public hearing on July twenty seventh at nine thirty. For the same bylaw. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the. Questions on the adoption of the motion to give first reading to bylaw zero zero five two oh two three. And to direct admin to schedule and advertise a public hearing on July twenty seventh at nine thirty for the same bylaw as written in your agenda, all those in favor. The count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Thank you for attending, Director Wilkinson. The next item of business is item number seven point two. Grants to organizations, there is uh no direct uh. Recommendation here from, there is no recommendation laid out by admin. So it would be reasonable to first, uh, engage a bit of a discussion probably on this particular one. Counselor Holland, you had your hand up, do you wanna start that discussion?
I was ready to make motion.
Okay, does anybody have any comments they wanna make before that? Go ahead.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to donate, um. Uh, pardon me, five hundred dollars to the Athabasca Northern Lakes College Student Union for their field trip to Edmonton Valley Zoo, please.
And, uh, do you, are you, because there's two applications in there, are you gonna include the the comments to deny the application to, uh?
No, I'm not going to include those comments because they were disqualified, according to the administrative report.
Sure. Okay, so Council Holland has made a motion to donate five hundred dollars to the Athabasca Northern Lakes College Students Union for their field trip to the Edmonton Valley Zoo, is there any discussion? Counselor, uh, Wallack then Chamsik.
When was, I can't find it on this, but when was the application put in for the Northern Lakes College?
Um, I saw that in there.
It was put in on April twenty fourth.
Okay, thank you, and didn't we, oh, that was a different one, nevermind.
I just wanna say, I know that, uh, disc golfers absolutely. I cannot talk exploded this year, and I mean, it's become a very big hot commodity. Commodity and lots of local young children are even getting into it as well. Recent. Point three, never mind, oh, boy, can I drink my coffee a little faster today?
So I'm not the only one that's lost, or? Okay. Is there any other relevant discussion? Counselor Gerlick.
Yeah, I I feel a little uncomfortable with the with the layout of that thing, where there's flying food, transportation, admission. I don't know. I don't, I I I don't really like it.
Okay. Council men's.
I actually feel the same way, uh. This is, this is a college, this isn't, uh, uh. Like a grade school, like the grade fours or the grade. Sixes or something like that, going to this, to this zoo, and this is, this is people that are actually adults, isn't it? That that were funding.
Depending on your definition of adult.
So, to 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 fund. This, this is the youth, isn't it, or?
It's grants grants to groups.
Yeah.
Grants to organizations policy.
Yeah, I I I feel the same way as Counselor Gerlock. Little iffy on on whether we fund this or not. To a zoo.
Counselor Holland, you made the motion, so we recognize that, I'm gonna leave you to have the last word, um, is there any others, Council Chrome.
Thank you, through the chaired Council Gerlock and Men's. I understand what you're feeling, what you're saying, but the way our policy is written. It does apply to, we would have to change the policy. And I don't think that's a fair thing to do right now, while we have open. Open submissions that should be. Approved as written. That might be something that might be more appropriate to bring back to a policy review, to do a revamping of that.
Uh, Council Anderson.
Thank you, I would argue that we don't actually need to. Uh, amend the policy, council has the discretion on which. Grants to approve and which ones to decline, and I would. Echo the sentiment that if there's was a grade school that we are paying for. A field trip for, I would be in favor, but not for college students.
Also, Gerlock. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, to say there's taking seven vehicles and gas for seven vehicles and and. I don't know, I just, I would be embarrassed to put any request for something like that.
Council Walk.
It also shows on the marketing, there's no marketing for us, so if we don't even get recognition, um, for the donation, so I would be opposed to to this as well.
Is there any, uh, so we've been around, I, um. Uh, Northern Lake students are a unique bunch, I know I, um, had the opportunity to attend their convocation. There are certainly people that I saw across the stage from. All different, uh. Groups in our society and and I think in the application, it talks about, you know, some of these, uh, some of these experiences are designed to be. Uh, enlightening and team building and and so I I think remembering that these guys can tend to be. Younger people, uh, depending again on what program. I I don't know that it's a bad thing, so, um, we do have a policy that provides to supply some grants to organizations. The zoo isn't my first choice of somewhere to go, but that's not up to me to decide, I I think they meet the requirements and so I can get behind this. Uh, counselor.
I just, I would like to add too, that I think historically councils past have supported, uh, Northern Lakes for, uh, five hundred dollars for. Uh, activities such as this, and I think that's what we ran into, um, that little hiccup where they weren't. Quite sure they had to reapply every year, and they were quite good at getting their, um, application in. Um, and taking that, uh. Guidance from last time that they had, um, I guess missed the submission deadline, so I'd like to point out to that too, that they have taken. Taken our advice to get their application early.
Um, any further comments from the table? Before I leave the final word to Council Holland and then I'll call the question, Council Holland.
Thank you, um, you know, I appreciate the comments that are, um, at the table, um. Going to certain vehicles is probably cheaper than renting a bus nowadays, being the costs of transportation and and, uh. Getting a bus and probably a bus is probably a little bit too large, um, going to a zoo, um. There's a whole lot that can be learned at a zoo, especially if they're doing a biological study or, uh, something of that sort, so I I see extreme value. In any student, no matter if they're in a grade school or post-secondary, to receive as much experience as I possibly can, and, uh. I'm happy to see that we have this grant to be able to support that.
So, on the question of the adoption of the motion to donate five hundred dollars to the Athabasca Northern Lakes College Students Union for their field trip to the Edmonton Valley Zoo. All those in favor? Two, three, four, five opposed. For the count is five and four, and the motion is adopted. Seven point three. Youth Assistance. Grant Alberta Junior Disc Golf. Counselor Chamsik, I think, uh, I think you were a step ahead of us here.
I was.
Is, uh. Is there someone willing to move the motion, Council Holland?
I'd actually like to move remove that motion, I'm just trying to get to the recommendation.
Eighty nine.
Um, if I may, um, to donate. If I may, to donate five hundred dollars to the Alberta Junior Disc Golf Championship to come from the Youth Assistance Grant in the budget, and the reason why I chose the number five hundred is because this is a national event, Athabasca Minor Hockey received that for a provincial event, and I believe that this is something that is going to bring a lot of attention to this community.
Counselor Holland has made a motion to donate five hundred dollars to the Athabasca Junior Disc Golf Championship to come from the Youth Assistance Grant. Discussion. Counsel Chamsik.
Well, you know how I feel, I think it's a, a great thing and it's in the community and a wonderful thing to support.
For the discussion? Because I'm more in favor, okay, so I'll, I'll go if we're all hesitant, I'm more in favor of the three hundred, simply because the, the difference between minor hockey and this is the volume and the number of of local participants, but I do think that the fact we have this disc golf course and tournament in our region is something that we should celebrate, and so I'm happy to see us get behind it either way. Counselor Kapitanic, you were weaving.
Yeah, it's okay, I'm, I'm just just cautious about what's remaining in our budget and it's, you know, things do just pop up and we might cut ourselves a little short for something that also promotes our community in the future, so I'd be comfortable staying at the three hundred recommended.
So do you want to make, are you making an amendment to do that?
Yes. Yes, I would like to amend it to three hundred.
And then we can choose. Counsel Kapitanic has moved that we amend the donation amount to three hundred for the disc golf, discussion on that. Remembering Counselor Holland, you have the final word. Counsel Crumlin.
Through the chair to the C A O, to pass on to Director Chernichan and Administration, I would just like to thank them for having that breakdown. How it is written in that agenda item, I know that was a point of discussion before and that looks very well to help us see what has been used and what is remaining, so just a kudos on that, not actually a question related to the question, but thank you.
Other, other discussion? Counselor Holland, do you want to speak to the amendment before I put it on the floor?
Thank you very much. As I understand the comments that are being made, I would like to reiterate, we have people coming here from as far as Vancouver. It is a national event, it is the second year, second annual, and I suspect that this event will continue to grow and become more and more popular. You know, of course, bringing to our community and showcasing our community and amazing that Rocky Lane Fairways and Recreation are hosting this and putting this forward and, and making this happen, so I, I believe we should be in full support of the five hundred, thank you.
So you are suggesting people vote against the amendment? So on the question of the adoption of the amendment to change the amount of the, the proposed donation from five hundred to three hundred, all those in favor? Okay, one, two, four, opposed. To, somebody didn't vote. Also, it's the count is four and five, so the amendment fails. On the question, are you, if you're ready for the main motion, the question of the adoption, the motion to donate five hundred to the Alberta Junior Disc Golf Championship to come from the Youth Assistance Grant, all those in favor? And that would be nine and zero and the motion is adopted.
Just a Chris.
We're generous. The next item is seven point five, I can tell you as an update before we do this. That came on from Counsel Holland, so I'll go to you, but the town has this on their agenda for next week. And Boyle has not yet signed off but approved the agreements at, at a meeting. Counselor Holland, you, or is there someone willing to move a motion?
I'll move the motion.
So the, the council has moved the emotion, the motion to approve the emergency response agreement. With the town of Athabasca. The town and the village.
And the village board.
Sorry, Counselor Holland, do you want to address it?
I just had a question actually, and I'm hoping through the C A O, entering me, when looking at the memorandum of agreement, I'm assuming all of the emergency management review recommendations and that report and whatnot was considered when the memorandum of understanding was complete?
Mister Reeve, through the charity, Counselor Holland and all members of council. Actually, the fire services review and the fire master plan agreement have very little impact because both the village and the town as separate municipal entities fall outside of that particular review, but considerations to some of the elements were definitely incorporated in terms of levels of service, so both the village and town who had copies of the fire service review were in agreement with proposals of creating some consistency, consistency through the region, so that was incorporated, and so such things as cause number five, the rate for the use of the emergent, emergency equipment adopting the Alberta transportation rates, which were identified in the level of service review were incorporated into these agreements, so not specifically, but collateral.
Awesome, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
This is a great progress to see, C A O, and thank you for moving that along, is there any further discussion on the, that motion? Seeing no one raising their hands on the, the question is on the adoption of the motion to approve the emergency response agreement with the town of Athabasca and to approve the emergency response agreement with the Village of Boyle, all those in favor? That is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Item number seven point six is next on our agenda. The, we've received a letter from the Summer Village of Island Lake, and they are looking to establish a steering committee. Counsel, what is your will and is there a motion? Counselor Chamsik.
Considering, thank you, considering Mister Mins for a council member.
So Counsel Chamsik has moved the council appoint Counsel Mins to the regional waterline feasibility study steering committee. And that council can, the financial support one, consider the financial support.
Consider.
Okay, and the council consider the financial support. Could we word the motion that we recommend council appoint Counsel Mins to join the steering committee and report back to council on the proposed cost to Athabasca County?
Yes, that would be the perfect.
Pardon me? Doesn't matter, council decides. Counsel Mins, you've been nominated for a role. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I, I, I want to thank everybody for that, yes, I, I, I agree with the nomination and everything of going on the steering committee, I think it'd be, it's a great it's a great day to see the, the feasibility study coming through. I'm, I'm an avid, I'm a very avid pusher for this because there's so many. We need to sell more water. This is just going to advance on behalf of the, of the commission to, to help create revenue going forward, so.
Yes, thank you, okay, and there are certainly opportunities to advance the interests of our ratepayers in the West by potential waterfill stations and all of that and, and water service to the fire, there's a lot of good opportunity there, so. So you made the motion. Counsel Mins, do you have any other comments you wanted to make, that's good?
No, other than, yes, I'll be reporting back and, and, and stuff like that, I guess. The, considering the contributing financial support that will be decided there, right? This is going to be split up or?
I think the, the, the ideas from what I understood, letters that there'd be a negotiation and I see Counselor Holland on deck for the comments to conclude the comments, I guess I'd started. I would I mean, I'm in favor of the motion the way it's proposed because it brings the cost funding back to council. I would hope that you will negotiate something different than using equalized assessment because given the size of our, you know, two point two billion dollars in assessment relative to the summer villages, there is no balance there, so there. But I, I'm confident you can come up with a formula that our partners would accept and that, that's fair to them and us, and that you can bring back to council for final approval. Counselor Holland.
Thank you, just for clarity for myself, I was just reading through and of course, as you mentioned, the funding isn't quite sorted out yet. So is that just basically because we don't have the confirmation of what all municipalities in summer villages want to take part? Is that the reason why, okay, that's all I needed, thank you.
C A O.
Mister Reeve, through the chair to all members of council, in discussion with the municipal partners. The purported sharing of the costs and the cost that would be shared is seventeen thousand two hundred dollars relatively small amount. It would be based on assessment. There was an area that was defined around the summer villages that would include the county and the amount of our assessment in that area is a hundred and forty-four million dollars, so considerably smaller than the two point two or two point three billion dollar total assessment would not share across the entire county. Second point is Counselor Holland's has pointed out, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight potential partners, and here seven municipalities as well as the Regional Service Commission. So once we have all of the figures, we would know what the total assessment is. I would suspect our contribution is going to be between seventy-five hundred and eight thousand dollars. Approximately about half of that, just knowing the summer villages and their general rough assessment, so not huge numbers, but certainly a distinct signal of our partnership on a regional basis.
Other comments on participation, Counsel Gerlach?
Yeah, I guess my concern is the end goal is to have a truck fill. Like, like how many million dollars is it going to take to get water pipe there for a truck fill? When wouldn't it be just as easy to fill the truck here and drive those few miles as opposed to investing millions of dollars in a pipeline? I, I don't know whether you see the water consumption up dramatically because they must be getting it here now as it is.
Through the.
Councilman's fill.
Through the chair, sponsor, Counselor Gerlach, yes, the, the end goal is to, to get the waterfill station out. Out to Island Lake, maybe even, maybe even one halfway, possibly, the other, the other goal is to, to get this pipeline out there and for other people to be able to, other ratepayers to be able to hook up to it. We have a, again, I keep going to, to the industrial site going west of Athabasca tying in there. We got two or three big shops sitting there with cisterns right now that could be tied in. And, and the foot, footprint on the ground of the amount of water being hauled out of this, out of the town of Athabasca is tremendous. And the feasibility study will actually give us that idea of what how many million it will take to put the pipe in the ground, and then from there, the water for life grant will be applied for and, and we will, you know, guarantee it will try to, try to make it as cheap as we can to, to put this in. And then plus another thing is, is getting a pipeline out there also will create revenue for the commission to sell more water. And I'd really like to see it go across the river too.
One day, one day. Counsel Chamsik, I'll give you the final word, just as the mover of the motion, Counsel Gerlach, did you, does that adequately satisfy your question, given that you had the floor?
I just wanted to make the comment, we're spitting dust in the deep south. And and when these grants are are given, it's to serve another municipality and, and then there's our opportunity to secure a grant to take water south drain away, so to speak. That was my, that was one of my concerns because people down there would like some water too, and they're in our municipality.
Counselor Holland.
Thank you, and I appreciate your words, Counsel Mins, because I think it's also very important to expand whether or not it's another summer, summer village or not, they're still within our region, and it still benefits our county, and correct me if I'm wrong, should we be doing another study in Rochester area being that one was done and they were not interested? At that time, has that maybe changed?
I think that's a separate topic and very worth discussion, but I'm going to direct you back to the topic, which is participation in a study going to the partners in the, the summer villages in the West, but if if we should do a study to Rochester, that should be a separate R F D or separable, separate item.
Can I make a second motion after we're done this conversation then, to have that conversation, would you like to see an R F D?
It seems to me that it's unrelated to the agenda in front of council.
R F D is.
I'd be happy to arm wrestle you for it.
What you wish for.
I, is there anybody else who wants to make a comment, Counsel Crumlin or?
Thank you, Mister Chair, I will support any discussion and, and look for ways to get more water out into parts of our community, realizing that it's not just the summer village residents would benefit from that, but residents of the county as a whole, and I think anything we can do to bring more water to more people should be top of one of our, our agenda items, as water is life, so I, I definitely support this, and I would support another study going to another area afterward, so very happy with it.
So before I give the floor to Counsel Chamsik, is there any final words? Seeing none, I would add that this is not our study, this is something our neighboring municipalities are doing, and we're just being given an opportunity to participate. And the, you know, the number of residents in the number of residences and the, the assessment in the area that this is being directed to is is considerable, Island Lake South, Island Lake North, the North Island Lake, Summer Village alone is over a hundred million dollars, the South one, I can't remember, so I you know, there's, there's a pretty healthy group of people in that, that region that are inside our boundaries but not part of our municipality. Counsel Chamsik, the final word is yours.
Well, I just want to make the comment, I think it's really important that we do support these feasibility studies, and I'm excited about the possibilities of revenue and moving water to the West, North, maybe the South as well, and I think that this is an excellent thing to be here.
So the, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion to appoint Counselor Mins to join the steering committee. And he will report back to council on the proposed cost to Athabasca County, all those in favor? That is supposed, no, it was nine and zero, sorry, Counsel Walk, I didn't you're too fast for me, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Seven point eight is the county beach request, Counselor Mins, did you want to move a motion?
Yes, I'll move the motion.
Counsel Mins has moved to recommend council authorize, council authorize Mins and Hall to engage in a discussion with the councils of Summer Villages of South and West Baptiste or others applicable on the potential opportunities for cost sharing with maintenance and upgrades to the beach and boat launch and report back to council, discussion. Counsel Mins, do you want to open the discussion?
I guess, yeah, I threw this on just, just to say, you know what? I'd like to very much thank Reeve Hall for, for his input in the R F D. And, and this, this came around a little bit from when we met with the summer villages at their general meeting there in the spring, in May, and off to the side, it was, said, hey, can we, can we look at fixing up the county beach or can you guys look at doing something there and with my access down into the, into the boat launch and the beach where I did take the pictures and everything, it, it, it very much comes to light that that you know, anything that, may, maybe if we get to work together with, with the summer villages, because, because they are using You know, anything that may maybe if we get to work together with with the summer villages, because because they are using. The county beach just as much as as county residents and and why not work together and try to get uh, try to fix it up. There are more and more people using it, I think, uh. Uh, trying to create a better beach and and possibly fixing up boat launch a little bit better and 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 stuff like that. Little bit extra money, working together with the summer villages, I think would be a would be a great, great uh undertaking and and uh. I think it would all, it would just enhance everything, even even to the to the east side of the county, even in the Skeleton Lake area and that. Uh, Amos Lake and 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 Chum Lake. You got uh, working with all these people would be a, would be a great asset, so. That's where that comes from.
Thank you for that introduction and comments, other comments from council. Seeing them. Um, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion. To appoint Minz and Hall to engage in a discussion with the councils of the summer village of the South and West Baptiste and others if applicable. On potential opportunities for cost sharing, maintenance and upgrades to the county beach area, boat lodge and report back to council. All those in favor? The count is nine and zero and that motion is adopted. Seven point nine is. A recommendation to uh do further. Skills training and upgrading. Is there someone willing to move the motion? Council Hall, uh, Cromwell. So move it, Council Cromwell has moved to direct administration to organize a refresher for the council orientation to be held on the second Tuesday of July. And to offer attendance space to the neighbors in the town and village. The floor is open for discussion. Signal, Council Anderson.
Thank you. I just want to say, um. I participated in the original council orientation when we were first elected. And. They weren't kidding what they said about drinking out of a fire hose our first little while and. When I read this RFD and the more I thought about it, I actually think I would get better value out of it now. And that I have a little bit of context to tie those items to, and so I'm uh championing for. Bringing this forward because I think it's a great opportunity.
Good, other discussion. Council Holland, for yours.
Thank you. Um. We all know I support training wholeheartedly um for everyone and I I I huge advocate for that. Um, I'm struggling a little bit, um. For a few reasons and I'll I'll our orientation that we had, we all still have that on our desktop. It's all available for us to review. We attend the law seminars, those are very much refreshers to our orientation and give us the ability to ask any questions that we may be concerned about. Um, as much as I, um. I am in support, of course, of of anyone wanting to redo their orientation, however, the date is a bit of a concern for me for two reasons. Um, we canceled a regular council meeting on that day, um, and it's my understanding that that allows. Uh, administration to, you know, be able to take holidays, not to be so taxed, as well as it allows. Other counselors, because our summer months have so many different events that we're asked to go to or or to attend that um our calendars become very full. And we don't have our new C O, not not, no offense what what whatsoever, but our new C O, as far as I'm concerned, would also benefit. And uh if we're going to redo and hash out a new orientation refresher that. Uh, when our new CEO is on board, that that might be a better time to hold something like that, which I would recommend to. Uh, maybe amend the motion from July twelfth to September, October, or when in November, whenever the new C O may be available. Um. And I guess I also have a have a bit of a concern with regards to um the different training that. Is being asked because we did have some. Uh, about a year ago, I guess it is, where it was mentioned that if you don't feel you have your your enough training, you know, it's on your own time, on your own dime. And I mean, that's that's coming out of the newspaper, so I'm wondering and I'm I'm happy if people have changed their minds um on. Uh, training and and how important that that is for for counselors. So my question then to that would be what topics are. Going to be considered. Um, I think one of the most important topics that should be considered is workplace harassment. Um, that's one of the things that we should be looking at for sure, that that I believe this. Uh, council could really benefit from everyone having that course, um, possibly doing that on a yearly basis. So, um, I guess if anything, I'd like to put an amendment in to change that date. And with regards to the neighbors, uh, town and village. We don't have the same operations, so I'm concerned as to how that would benefit them and how much it would take away. From an actual orientation refresher if it doesn't apply to their operations as it does to ours.
Counselor Chamsak. Sorry, actually, sorry to cut you off. Counselor Holland, um, you made the comment you'd like to propose an amendment to change the date.
Yes, please.
In conversation. Would you like to propose an amendment to move the date to after the new C C O is engaged?
Absolutely, and to um. Reconsider as well that the attendance of the village and the town, I don't believe that that would be benefit. Uh, but I'm I'm open minded and amenable to persuasion. I just would like to hear more about that.
Okay, Council Chamsak.
Through the chair, uh, you bring up a good point, um, with our um municipal partners or. Calendars are always interesting enough. Um, I know with the proposed date, I will not be here, I'll be grown down the river in the brigade as it is. Um, I do like also like the idea of the new C O in place, so that's uh three points to bring up.
Okay, Counselor Minz.
I was actually gonna not. Uh, br- bring that up also, um, and and also even our interim director in uh infrastructure and. And. And the possibility of actually having. Having restructuring of of everything all of a sudden, maybe that's that's a very good idea. I'm all for the. Uh, looking back or 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 going forward and 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 doing the orientation refresher course, you betcha. Uh, but to hold back a little bit until we get permanent people in, awesome.
Counselor Anderson and Capitaine.
Um, just for clarification. When I read that this is the orientation session regarding roles, responsibilities, yeah, so municipal government act and a detailed review of the code of conduct. Um, to me, that meant the one day orientation that we did with Reynolds Mirth.
Yep.
Um, what it was. Not the internal orientation that we took with each of our departments to learn about the operations, so. Uh, there seems to be.
So and for clarity, I I can add that that was the internal issue with, you know, what do the, what does a public works director do? That that's not the in spirit of what's here. Um, as the writer, I will uh clarify. That um, you know, the, I've since had the 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 privilege of attending a uh governance session on commissions. In Westlock and you know, that information, it's that type of information uh that was well done, not not the. Details about what does planning and development do or what does all of that, it's the the bigger picture, um. The one day type stuff and it's it's. So the items that I would imagine would be covered there would be things that would be applicable to the neighbors and. In my view, if we're doing something that we're going to do for ourselves anyway. It does not do us any harm to open the door to our. To our neighbors and offer uh them the opportunity. Um, if it helps them to, if they if they take us up on it, great. If they don't, that's up to them. But if it helps them out, um, then I think there's some. Some value in that. Um, I had Council Capitanic.
I am. Not in favor of retaking a training on the public's dime that we have done already. Um, and will state that I'm usually and will stay in. In the opinion that if you feel that you have. Um, missing information and that you can go back and get that information online and spend time reviewing it, that you should be prudent and do so. Um, with that being said, I will vote for us to do it together collectively as a team if. It looks like this team wants to do it, but I don't think it's worth the money.
Who hasn't spoke and wants to? If none, we'll work through the question. The uh first question is on the adoption of an amendment. To uh delay. The date to after the new C O is available. And um. Do you still want the portion about reconsidering the town and the village in there? Take that out. So to do to delay the uh date till after the C O is uh in place, if the main motion moves ahead. Does everybody understand that or should I? If you're good on the question that adoption of that amendment, all those in favor? The opposed. Okay, so the count is seven and two and the amendment is adopted on the main motion to direct admin to organize a refresher for the council orientation to be held. After the new C O is in place and to offer attendance space for neighbors in the town and village, all those in favor? And it was nine and zero and that motion is adopted. Seven point one. Is there anyone willing to move the motion? Sorry, seven point one zero. Well, is your Counselor Anderson or Counselor Capitanic, you spoke first, sorry. Okay, Counselor uh Capitanic has moved that we accept the expense claims as reported. Is there discussion?
I just wanted to clarify that these were. Claims that um it's not from our entire term.
No, this is from January uh. Signed and paid in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion, Council Holland.
Thank you. So the motion is just to accept the expense claims as reported?
Yep.
Okay, so I know there's mention in in your uh discussion and background and whatnot. Um, you know, that mentions the importance of transparency, um, and that there is a delay on the. Uploading to the website for the expense claims that we currently have and I have to admit, um. I hope that we can improve the. Uh uploading, I hope that I don't know what the delay is or what that what that looks like or why that that is a delay. But I have to be honest, when it comes to talking about transparency, um, as important as that is and how I am a huge advocate for that, as we all know. Um, I believe that part of that ship has sailed when council pulled back on the live streaming of all public meetings. So I I I sit back and I go, you know, it's it's wonderful to mention it, but I believe that. Being as transparent as possible has to encompass everything, not just a couple of things. So I just wanted to make that mention, um. I think I'll leave it at that for now. I had a few more comments, but I'll leave that for now.
Thank you. Further comments or are you ready for the question? Customs.
I uh so with this one, one question I have is with this motion, uh. So that means we're going to upload these to every every council meeting?
No, um, the the intent is that on a regular basis, I'll provide council a report to accept them so that council has said, yep, we're. Not every council meeting because the that's too much work, like.
Oh, okay.
Once a month, once every second month would be the intention.
Okay, that's what I was.
I mean, typically, there's not lots, so it might be every second month. It's an acknowledgement that they're there and. And it makes them um. Makes them more easily accessible than, because once you know where they are on the website, I'll admit, if you know where they are, you can dig your way into them. If you don't know exactly how to get them, it's not.
Oh, yeah.
Straight, you know, Council Chamsak.
Can we possibly put it in a policy day, I think we do it every quarter or half year?
I think that's a different discussion and if you want to propose a policy to do that later, that would be, um, if you feel that's necessary, then we can do for sure. It's Council Minz first and then Holland.
The only other thing I wanted to say is 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 uh. When. And I'm not not picking on anybody here, but when when admin. Uh, books, books rooms for county business, they book the rooms for county business. If any other counselor wants to stay a few extra days or go a few extra days before. Book it yourselves and maybe that'll deter this 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 one in here for for example, uh. Oh, no, 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 uh, it it's it, yeah, but. The biggest thing is 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 try to make it so. County business is separate from personal business and then there's no discrepancy on who gets charged where, what, when, why? Uh, I think it's just a, I I think it'd just be a better way to go.
Um, so Counselor Holland will give you the floor and then you have the last word.
Okay, thank you. Um, I had a. A concern, I guess, that that popped up for me as well and I I just. Wanted to kind of bring forward, uh, we do have a policy as well, eighty-two twenty. Um, that mentions that all council should be entitled to attend the following by resolution of council. And that was our RMA fall and spring, the eggs um service board, et cetera, as well as seminars, conventions, workshops. And whatnot, that you have to have a resolution of council to do that. That didn't happen for the last. Army, we did not do that and it was my understanding was mentioned, the previous C O had said because it was in the budget, we didn't have to do that. Um. But however, that isn't an exact budget line. That specifies what that budget is made up for, what it's being planned for. So I was a bit concerned about that because I also noticed that there was a an expense claim for a trip for um. Out of town to Grand Prairie that I don't believe there was a resolution for and I don't know if that was something that. We were even a member of as of yet, so I was a little bit concerned about that. So just curious how that works with these resolutions. Because as far as I can see, it's if it's a one liner budget, we've got twenty grand, for example, in it. And it's not specifying exactly what that twenty grand is spent for. I'm under the impression, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that we do require a resolution of council so that. The public understands where we're spending that that money.
CEO. Mister Reeve, uh, through the chair to Council Hollands and all members of council. Certainly, the council resolution on the face of it should be what is being followed. But at the same time, because council's already approved the budget, though not in detail. The authority is there for council to attend the conferences, so we're. At cross purposes somehow. That will be addressed uh next Tuesday at the Committee of the Whole Meeting when we bring forward. The new draft policy that council's uh taking a look at already and uh. The administration has incorporated all the directions and discussion that we had that the May twenty uh twenty-sixth Committee of the Whole Meeting. I think May twenty-sixth. Or May twentieth, forget the date, but those particular items have already been identified as issues. And I think we've got solutions and part of that solution, if I may uh just expand the uh response, uh Mister Reeve. Is to have line items for each member of council that shows. The compulsory uh conventions or conferences, the optional ones. As well as line for training and development. So it's very clear, very transparent and everybody knows what the budget. Appropriations are on an annual basis, so we're getting there. Um, just a little bit of cleanup, but I'm quite excited about the progress that we're making in that uh particular area.
Thank you, Council Captain.
Appreciate that. Um, and this is the chair, just in response to Council Minz, um, in the case of this situation, which anyone could have asked me at any time. I did book my room separately in another hotel that we originally were booked in because I had a personal event prior. Then we moved hotels and so I did have to have that room moved because I didn't think it was reasonable for me to have to switch rooms. I did book it separately on my own card. The county booked my room separately on their card. The staff made a mistake and over multiple at the hotel, multiple phone calls and multiple situations. I don't want to speak to. The level of training their staff have on the front desk, but it was not, they were not able to refund me for the day that they accidentally charged me, so I paid it on my own card. And put it in an expense claim. It was simpler, it was easier and it was more respectful to them really because frustration was getting out of control. Now, in the case where, um. I mean, we were in that prior hotel. Uh, before everyone changed over to this hotel, um. I considered just staying at that hotel for the two days that were on my card anyway and then coming over. But I will just, that's basically what it was, convenience. I don't want to switch rooms halfway through. And I think there's problem.
So that's the mover on the question of the adoption of the motion to expense, to accept the expense claims as reported.
Mister Reeve, just one other comment and uh to the chair to Counselor uh Chamsak. Counsel would ne- would not need a separate policy. As part of the budget process, it could be a standing requirement, administration or the Reeve. Bring forward the reports on counselor's claims and. The reports on counselor claims and expenses and claims on a quarterly basis. That would be the normal practice and procedure most most municipal. So just offer that as a. Suggestion.
No, I'm going to call the question and then we will um. So on the question of the adoption of the motion to accept the expense claims as reported, all those in favor. Opposed. So the count is eight and one, and the motion is adopted. Counselor Chamsik.
Uh, through the reef to C A O, please. Um, just out of curiosity, is there a possibility that? That portion could be included into that draft upcoming draft policies of consideration as well?
Let's bring it up at the policy meeting.
Fair enough.
Good. Thanks for the heads up.
Um, item, next item of business, we are almost an hour again, or is everybody content to carry on till lunch? Set to will. Let's let's take care of eight point one and then take a five minute break because I think this is a it's a one line. Item eight point one seems to me to be the reconsideration of a motion on a matter already decided by council. The procedural by law states no discussion of a question that has been decided is permitted until a motion for reconsideration has been carried. It's in order to entertain a motion for reconsideration of realized solution twenty two dash four eight eight. To refer the request to the budget and finance to review the costs, and that was carried on the thirtieth of June twenty twenty two, less than a year ago. Is any council prepared to move the council reconsider resolution twenty two dash four eighteen? Counselor Chamsik would like to move that. So the time of council is, of course, not to be wasted by making it vote over and over on subtle issues. It's reconsideration motions are non debatable. So on the question of whether we want to reconsider twenty two forty eight, all those in favor. Opposed. The count is eight and one. There are greater than two thirds in the affirmative, and the motion is adopted. Regarding item eight point one, there's a recommendation from administration. Is anyone willing to move the motion? Counselor Chamsik. Coast of Chansik has made a motion to um. Approve the speed reduction on the North Skeleton Lake Road Narrows Road. That's Township six five four. From eighty to fifty kilometers. From the intersection of Range Road one nine one and east to the lake. To approve the reducing speed limits within the residential subdivisions of Shadow Lane. Sunset Villa Paradise Valley, Perch Cove, Katie Cove from fifty to thirty. And to improve the installation of six. Speed limit signs per the locations identified by Public Works for a cost of about a thousand dollars. Is there any discussion? It's a long one. Okay, Councilmen's.
I guess, uh, yeah, I got uh uh no problem with with uh. Uh, this motion, um. I know they've been after it for a while to have uh speed limit knocked down and not and. And that, uh, when they first came, they wanted. I I think in the neighborhood of thirty or forty signs. And now down to six. Okay, well, we can live with that. Just wondering if uh we should maybe be proactive a little. And uh. Look at other subdivisions around Skeleton Lake possibly. Yes, or do we want to wait for them to write in a letter because? This is what's going to happen. All of a sudden, we're going to have other. People writing in saying, can we can we now have our speed limit? Reduced. Especially. There's a few of them around there. I know that uh. Honestly, you can't get going more than thirty K, so so that's just my thought. Do we? Do we want to be proactive and and? Look at reducing the signs and and or the speed limits and and other subdivisions.
Okay. Um, additional folks who want to speak to the motion or float a response to the comment uh. Council.
So I've seen in other subdivisions, et cetera, that the community actually puts up their own signage. With um kids at play, all that kind of stuff. Do we need to put more signs up or can they just do that?
Well, um, anyone else? Okay, so customer means a word, then Council Chamsik.
The only thing with that is we don't really allow. We 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 do not allow uh personal signs to go up on our roadways. Uh, because if you put a kids a place sign up and and stuff like that, it's actually uh. Uh. I think if we look back in the policies and the bylaws, people can't put signs up, private signs up in. Reducing speeds and. And playground signs and stuff like that, because as soon as you put a playground sign up, you're reducing, you're you're automatically reducing the speed. So. So no, we don't. We don't want that. To happen. I know I see me. I I think I know what you're talking about there. Uh, counselor Wallach is them little kids. Yellow signs that somebody puts it there at their driveway, but. That some people want to go and kick over and uh and stuff like that, but but yeah, that's that's. We don't really want people putting up their own personal signs because then all of a sudden boom, we got signs literally. Uh littering our rightovers.
It. Counselor Chamsik final word.
Yeah, uh, you know, those are easily purchased even at local dollar stores, so they're pretty hard to regulate. Um, I just want to say I feel that this has been really good application on behalf of this uh. Group that has done this, and I think that, you know, uh, Mr. Uh, counselor Min's also mentioned, you know, maybe looking. I I feel he was saying towards maybe a a sense of standard on a case by case basis in some of these similar areas um. Is something that we should be looking at.
So on the question of the adoption of the motion as printed in your agenda, moved by Counselor Chamsik. All those in favor. That is nine and zero. The motion is adopted. Let's recess for seven minutes. So how about we come back at thirty five minutes after? Um. Like to reconvene. For council meeting. The next item of business is number nine point one, calendars. Are there any errors, submissions, or deletions that we want to bring up? Uh, Council Chamsik.
I was nominated to sit on an executive committee. Does that stand on our calendars?
Uh, Ms. Blair, can you give us an opinion on whether we need watch out on the calendar?
Just so I know in the future.
I believe yes, any meetings that you're attending should be put on here. Okay, be put on here for just everyone's reference.
Okay, well, just to let you know, um, as zone one rep for Northern Lights Library. Um, I was on the ninth in Mournville and on the twenty first I have community futures, and that's all I have to add.
Sorry, the community futures is on which date again?
The twenty first.
Twenty first, okay. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. The multiplex meeting on. June nineteenth has been changed to one thirty P M.
That's Holland.
Thank you. Um. I'd also like to mention that, you know, June is Pride Month, and uh we also would be celebrating National Indigenous Peoples' Day on the twenty first. So hopefully, everybody gets a chance to do those festivities. Um, and in addition, on July sixth. Uh, community transportation at ten A M.
Other meetings. I can add that the. We have the workshop with T S I on the fifteenth. I think I can't remember the time, nine thirty. Uh, there is um. Uh, the North Alberta Elected Leaders Gathering in High Prairie on the sixteenth. The and then the uh northeast Mers and Reeves group meets in Vermillion on the twenty second. Twenty second, yeah.
And I'm sorry, what's the acronym for that one?
I don't know. Okay. Um, and then beyond that, that's what I have, Councilman's.
June. June seventeenth is the uh A G M for. For Athabasca Watership Council in Lacklavish. Yeah. So there the meeting was, uh, there was no meeting on uh. On the seventh. Uh, with Athabasca Watership Council, uh, being that there's a G M on the seventeenth.
Uh, Council Captain.
Oh, I just got a question of uh to correct to uh. Uh, agree that. Um, and it's all on the seventeen. I had it written down and I had it crossed off. And I go read down the end. It's confirmed the seventh.
It's confirmed seventeenth now.
Pembunism.
You. And I think we can delete Greater North from the twenty fourth fourth, but I'll I'll confirm that later I. We're. We're not meeting both months, so. I think the twenty fourth of July is a delete. If there are no other. Amendments. It would be in order to take and receive a motion to adopt the calendar as amended. Council Holland. Has moved that we adopt the calendars as amended. All those in favor. The count is nine and zero, and the motion is adopted. Okay, uh, we have eleven and twelve uh left lunch. Uh, the the. Lunch has been delivered. I'm wondering, even though we've only been back four minutes uh from. That recess lunch arrived much sooner than I expected, so. Is everybody good with a twenty minute lunch reconvene at twelve o'clock? Is that work? Workable? Okay, let's get it. Will it talk?
It's twelve o'clock and I'd like to call the council back to order.
It's here and I'm sure it's not likely so. No, well, at a distance, not that I but. What are we at? We're at section eleven, eleven point one B. We have a number of reports to discuss. I'll scramble all the floors yours.
Uh, thank you. I believe that was requested by Council Hall or Wallack rather with a question.
Sure. Yeah. Um, so with the in regards to the UCCA booklet, what benefit do we see as a community here?
Uh, that you see see a booklet will be coming to me here shortly and then we can discuss uh what the University of Congress. Would like to have out of clothes as well, so I can get back to you on that.
Okay, uh, second question. Um, there was request for two municipalities to be refunded. Uh, did we have a financial obligation as a county?
No, we do not.
Okay. This next question for the headquarters, the MOU signing ceremony, what is that?
Which report of mine are you reading?
It's written in like the upcoming events.
Okay, thank you. That is a memorandum of understanding between ACCPA, our partners in the province and the RCMP.
And how does that benefit the county?
It will benefit the county through increased crime prevention and materials that ACTPA will be able to provide us. And information can be followed up like that.
Uh, and then on page uh one sixty-three, you speak to wandering river a lot. Are you representing the county as a whole at this committee or is it just the wandering river area?
Absolutely, the county as a whole. I use an example when speaking with them, but we've talked about all parts of the county, including. Everything from Athabasca and Boyle detachment areas. Summer Village is an all part of the county.
Okay, and you refer to the speed uh speed monitor. Uh, as we heard Council Min say earlier that we're not allowed to place signs on the road, so I'm assuming that's not going to be placed in one or whatever.
Please remind me where you're reading exactly.
I read that earlier. Anyways, you said the oil field company had donated a uh speed sign. Sorry, I'm just trying to find it again.
Correct. There are two speed signs that are located in wandering river that have been donated. To wandering river and at times had been used. To indicate speeds like in the playground zone, but are not actively in use. That is something for. Our CPOs to use if they desire or fire services, nothing else.
Okay, and that's through the county that's placed, not through the community?
That would be correct. It would be a county department that would place and use them.
And then on page one sixty-seven, it speaks to water river again. Um, how is that as a county as a whole helping? With George, uh, Mr. Gregory. On the very bottom.
Well, thank you. As you recall, wandering river is part of the county council wallack and as such some of their. Concerns about lack of reporting and incidents going on. Is what has his attention so that we can help the residents in that area. As well as the rest of the county through that, learn how to report, what to report for the well-being of the county as a whole.
I just, yeah, I think that this is a countywide and it shouldn't be just directed at one specific community.
Point of order, I believe that's been announced.
Okay. Other questions?
I I would just follow up with um may it maybe it was just a slight on Mr. Gregory's part, but I. I would assume that he if he would like to chat with uh the like the council that he come as a delegation and uh as an analyst break down how important it is for us to report.
Through the chair to Council Capitan, uh, he will be speaking with both. The detachments, their commanders for both Boyle and Athabasca and figuring something out on their end. That is much more than just a community of wandering river, community of Richmond Park. So forth. That is well onto their end. Through the RCMP under their umbrella, not directly related to one of our areas of the county. Now he. I could see if he'd be willing to come do a a delegation to council. There would be a benefit for all the community on reporting themselves. And that's something I can look at next time I'm down chatting with him and see if you can get that arranged. I think that'd be delightful. That'd be great. I'm sorry, didn't have my microphone on.
Any other comments otherwise thorough and long reports? Thank you. Oh, Council Holland, your hand is up.
Thank you. Um, I think we also need to um be very thankful that this committee exists. We have a huge issue with crime, real crime is is on top of of many topics with being discussed around our community. Um, I was just curious with regards to um the uh real crime watch. Um, has there been any further? Um, progress there. Um, I know they're trying to find people to volunteer to create chapters has been difficult. In my area, you know, and going around and having that conversation and whatnot, but just curious if you if you've made any further. Progress because I just think that this is extremely important and I really appreciate this extremely thorough report.
Absolutely, and I thank you for that question. Uh, we are in the. In the area now where we're going to start looking for people to make rural cry a rural crime watch chapter. Now through that, we have the ability to do different um branches, as you will. And at that point, it'll be, you know, all. Committee run, but we can do one rural crime watch chapter for Athabasca County with. A. Uh, a branch over in Summer Village, a branch in the boiled detachment area, a branch in the. After basket attachment area, a branch in the cow's land area. And real crime watch along with citizens on patrol. Um, all these chapters are providing a great amount of information right now. In addition to K division and what we're able to to do and. Yeah, you're right. We're definitely at the point we're going to start looking for community volunteers to spearhead and run that. And now that the federal strike is over, some of that delayed information is finally coming in at, you know, no fault to the public servants that. Have a huge bit of backup from even that uh week and change that they were gone.
That's awesome. No, I appreciate that. And and I again, I applaud you for this extremely thorough report. This takes up a lot of time and effort and uh the people that you're engaging with. Um, I'd like to also. Extend my gratitude to them as well because of this extremely important initiative to do the best that we can to combat that real crime. So thank you very much.
Council chairman.
So I have a question, um, just so I can gain clarity on this. So you can only have one rural crime watch chapter and then have branches, correct?
We could have more than one within the county, but it would be simpler and. And a little bit easier their thinking right now if we have one overlying chapter with. Satellite areas of operation, just because we all know that volunteer membership is hard to find. It's hard to get enough people in to to cover all those roles and if we're looking for. Seven board members, but we want to do that three times. Now we're trying to find twenty-one board members where we could have. One chapter with a director representative from. Rochester area from Summer Village of. Wherever Island Lake from brass and area from four far from. And and they can work together on that collaboration.
I get that, but I guess where my question would be, so so you have one and we'll just pick. Two or three areas, grassland, Richmond Park and uh Island Lake, whatever. So these branches. Would have the expectation of pulling double duty and also going to the main chapter. Let's say, let's just say it's in Athabasca. Right? Like there'd be a representative of that branch and have to do another. Big meeting of the one chapter or the main chapter. Because I I worry about that just because if we're asking too much for volunteers in that aspect.
Think of it like the Water Commission. All right, I'm gonna use that as our example right now. We have a water commission. We have representatives from the town, the county and the village. They will come together for their monthly or bi-monthly meeting wherever it's held. Which rotates between the town, the village and the county, so can rotate between area one, two or three. They'll have their meeting. However, your internal satellite operations are all your own. So you're not going to request that everybody attend this one meeting. You will have a representative from group A.
I get that.
That will come over here, have the organizational meeting, but still have boots on the ground over in your area. Again, that.
Those schematics can be worked out, but I just have some concerns from the volunteer side.
And that was just one of the recommendations. The community might decide to know we want a chapter solely for the grassland area. We might want a chapter solely for Summer Village of Island Lake.
Okay.
They're they're all doable right now. We're in the we're getting to the tradition. Where we're going to start looking for the members to run. That group or groups and then move it forward. It's coming to the point where it's going to be turned over to the public hand going. This is what you need. If you want to do this, those that are willing. Here's how we're gonna do it.
Well, I can appreciate the work that uh definitely with the organization and stuff uh that goes into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eleven point one F Councilman's, I think you put that on the report.
Yeah, I just just wanted to give a quick update. We we didn't have a meeting. Uh, the meeting was canceled, so. Uh, but I did talk to the uh. Commission manager and everything uh everything's running well at the river, at the the raw water pump post. Everything's running well there and. No uh, no issues and then the other, so the the repair on the water. Intake in the river uh is still working well, not a lot of no sticks.
Uh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Uh, point of.
Safety water services question.
Yeah. Is that F? Yep. Why is it? Okay. Oh.
Customs for shirts. Okay, and uh, uh, just the other thing I was talking to him the other day and then they had divers in at the uh. Uh, reservoir, changing the new screens on the intake to the to the plant just due to uh. An algae buildup that's happening in there and it happens all over a lot of different. Reservoirs and that this uh mill foil, they call it. It's an algae that that plugs off the screens and uh so they. I don't know, engineers come together and. Built a new type of screen and it's supposed to work way better. So just a quick brief report and we'll we'll have a meeting next next month.
So they built a new type of screen for on top of that?
Uh, no, 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 this is in a reservoir.
Oh.
Where the water intake goes into the plant. They, yeah.
There we are. Thank you. You batch any questions for customers in the Water Commission? Coach Kirk.
What state uh there was a stand dick or whatever was in there doing a. An overall study, but is that progressing or?
Oh, you mean the asset management and governance uh study that uh they did. Uh, the commission manager did receive a report. The day before he or the day after he canceled the the meeting on uh uh this month and and it'll be coming up to the. On the on the next meeting.
So it's pretty well complete.
What's that?
It's it's complete.
No, it's not complete. It's just the beginning. This is a, this is a study that uh where we're going to start working with the engineering company to. Figure out asset management and and uh asset ownership is a big one. I said ownership of of. Who owns what, when, where and why and 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 then we start working towards. You know, I'm going to be, I'm going to call spade to spade. Our our water treatment plant is landlocked in the town of Athabasca. And the only way out of the town about the basket is through with with the water commission water is through. Through the town pipes and that's in the long end. That's where the issue is. Who owns what? And uh and how do we get around this? So. And I'm very hopeful that uh the one day uh I'm 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 hoping that that our water. Sources going out to tap in Athabasca County gets. We become the guinea pigs and gets turned over to to the Water Commission. And then that way we can. Move forward on this governance thing a little bit easier. It's it may slow down a bit possibly if. Being this the feasibility study is going to come in from Island Lake. Uh, and that might slow it down just a bit, but. We'll see what happens, but there'll be more discussion on it to at the next meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Holland, eleven point one H Landing Trail Steering Committee.
Thank you. Um, we had our last meeting June eighth. Um, there was a very interesting uh presentation done through. Or from the Iron Horse Trail representatives, um, and they spoke about um their organization, how the ten municipalities that come together. Um, to make the iron iron horse trail what it is and to give us an uh, you know, some tips and and um. Explanations on how we might be able to improve the organization with the five municipalities that currently meet. Along with Alberta TrailNet. So it was a very beneficial and a very interesting uh presentation that took place. We had a a financial update with regards to. Um, the Alberta Trailnet um committees grants um. And how those could be applied to the different items that we need for maintenance in our areas. Um. We had discussed this uh trail tour, which I think is just going to be awesome. It's going to go from the south to the north. So from. Starting at Fort Saskatchewan and then coming up through our way in September. Um, so there'll be, of course. More requests for volunteers to come and and help make those areas that will be toured and and the trails uh as pristine as we can make them. We are also looking at sign design um for the Willfong Bridge sign for to dedicate uh to them and thank them very much for their contribution. And donation um in that area of Collington as well. Um. What else did we do? We the June third cleanup was absolutely amazing. I'd like to thank everyone who attended. Um, it's part of our uh the TCT care grant. Um, it was absolutely awesome to see. The before and afters, which those pictures and whatnot will come in the report for the um TransCanada Trail Grant uh reporting. So that that information is coming. Um, we had weed eaters. We had whipper snippers. We had pruners. We had had everybody just going. To town and really making a huge difference. I don't know if you've noticed in Collington in those areas. You know, and I I was really appreciative of seeing people coming out. Um, I was traveling Bill Carlton Highway and seeing more and more people are using. The the landing trail. And so I think that that's really awesome. Um, and the more information that we can get out there and the more promotion that we can get out there. It's just a massive asset. That we have in our community. We are still having trouble though with uh vehicular use on the trail. Um, which is huge. No, no, those trails are not made and there's been a lot of time, a lot of effort and a lot of money. Put into keeping those trails um as they are for non-motorized and to see vehicular use on them. Is going to be extremely troublesome and extremely costly to repair. Um. Is going to be extremely troublesome and extremely costly to repair um as as time goes forward. So we're looking at different ways to. Uh enhance the barriers to prevent that news.
And the floor remains yours because uh the next item is eleven point one R, but before we get there, any questions on the on the trail report? Done. Eleven point one R, Community Transportation.
Alrighty, so our last meeting June first. Um as we all discussed here earlier, we were looking at different ways of being able to invite um the summer villages to come aboard. Um for the program and there was a couple of discussions that took place with and being that we are now currently operating as a per capita. Uh share for the financial costs. We looked at two different and please correct me if I'm wrong. We looked at two different options. Um one was to leave it as per capita for the summer villages and the other was for um creating a minimum. Um to come aboard because we have the eight different summer villages, they of course all have different populations ranging from forty six. Uh residents, permanent residents to a hundred and seventy four. Um and then, of course, I didn't think that that included the seasonal. So we sat and we discussed how we would come up with um a minimum. Uh rate that would be fair uh for everyone, especially considering the capital is already in place, the administration is already in place, all of those things already there. And so when I was looking into some of the things I was. Incorrect in in my first thoughts, but did uh clarify. So um the MGA did state. Way back in nineteen ninety seven um that to form a uh summer village, you had to have three hundred uh residents. And that has since in nineteen ninety seven was repealed. In Alberta, you can no longer form. A summer village. However, it's still listed on the jet websites and Canadian Alberta website that three hundred is the magic number. So that is the number. That the committee thought would be reasonable for a per capita, which then can, if we look at what we're currently on an average paying per capita. Would turn out to be about sixteen fifty one, I think it was, or sixteen fifteen sixteen, pardon me, sixteen fifty three. Um per capita is what we are currently, all three municipalities are contributing. Um. It turns out to be a dollar thirty eight per capita per month. So when we looked at the minimum, um we determined that that. Sixteen point five three five um per capita rate would then look for each municipality to be a total of about. Four thousand nine hundred sixty dollars and fifty cents, uh which turns out to be four hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty eight dollars. Four hundred thirteen dollars and thirty eight cents per month for each summer village um based on that minimum. So it's something that council. Would want to weigh in on to determine if they feel better with just leaving it as per capita. For the population that is on the census from twenty twenty one, or if they're comfortable with the minimum. And then once all councils have had that opportunity to determine what they would like to bring forward. That then administration would hopefully come together with a an invitation to the summer villages to bring them aboard. So I guess it's basically um what this council would like to see with regards to minimums or leaving it as per capita.
So I think you're looking for a little bit of feedback, Council Ballack, hand was up.
Um can we get this in a report so that we can see the numbers? I just on the next, like on the next council meeting.
If I may, if I may get that earlier, um because we do meet again um to go over this and trying to um have some more solid. Uh ideas. Reason also is because part and parcel of uh expanding our service uh allows us to have a better. Um eligibility for the Rural Transit Grant and what that provides is an eighty percent coverage for uh a a new vehicle. Um so that is a huge grant that we would really like to be able to apply for. And of course, timing is always of the essence with those types of things. So I'll get the report out as soon as possible and and maybe if we can get some feedback on that. That would be great.
I I know just based on what you've said, I I think the logic sounds pretty sound. It seems like you guys have thought that through. And um and to me, there's a standby charge that comes from having the the service ready and available. So per capita from a census seems a bit of a risk because um. That only counts for the permanent residents, not the seasonals and seasonals would be eligible to use it when they show up, so it. No. Given the situation with the grant and being creative and knowing that summer village budgets are relatively small and they tend to spend every last penny. Or nickel now um. I would be open minded to the idea that the first year that's waived and then then it starts into year two. So that because you need to get them on. You need to get them working with the service and starting to use it. So if it if it took a bit of an incentive to. I could stay, I could get behind that if you were to propose it. But um forty nine hundred bucks to have access to the services isn't unreasonable in my view. Anyone else wanna? Call Strerson.
Thank you for looking into that. It sounds like you've done quite a bit of research and I really appreciate. Being able to provide those numbers and I look forward to the report on it. Just basically from my understanding of. Your verbal report, though, I would be behind the minimum. Plot rate to start and I think you guys are doing a fantastic job of looking into that. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
And more feedback? Okay, so you got a little bit of direction at least and certainly, you know, you can come back to counsel and.
Absolutely, yeah, and I'll share this report as soon as I can. Yep, thank you.
The next item that we had highlighted was eleven point one U and that is Council Chamsak talking about family and community support services.
Uh we met on uh June fifth, just wanna bring a little awareness to the family wellness program. It's a program that runs from seven to seventeen. Uh diversifying in many programs such as Goza and youth clubs, uh the uh. Staff puts in a lot of work in towards training and towards mental health. Uh and it's a caregiver based model. Uh just on June sixth, it was the Boyle Senior Symposium. Reeve Hall and Deputy Reeve Anderson were also there in attendance, just to give a couple highlights in the importance of the symposium. Um Boyle also celebrated their fifty year celebration at the Senior Center. Um there were many topics um. Throughout uh such main topics, I would include our fraud protection. We also had. Staff Sergeant Purpreezy or Purpreezy, I'm not too sure how to say it. He spoke of a lot of the prevention side of it in the importance of reporting the fraud. Um interesting uh stat is average a hundred people are scammed across Canada in a day. Other topics include dental care, importance of dieticians, political care, personal directives. But I feel most importantly, um the FCSS uh seniors advocate can. Address the provincial and federal funding available. Her services are also free of charge. Uh she helps aid in government forms, community resources, and as a side note, she's also an ambassador for the Alzheimer's Society. And I just urge anybody that uh has any questions or concerns to reach out to her at the FCSS office.
Thank you. Any questions about the FCSS report? The next item of business is eleven point one AF. I didn't write down who asked to put that on the agenda. Councilmen's.
Yeah, I just got a few questions here to uh to ask uh Councillor Anderson. Um great report and all that uh uh very informative. Uh but I think I lost uh side of the report myself when the first uh the second and the third paragraph was. Was uh. Put in place there just regarding value of the information. Um. I know you said you found value of the information, but um you didn't think the rest of council found value in information. I'm just wondering why. Like what what's your? Why did you think that we didn't find the people that actually went with the the joined you and didn't find value either?
I don't read that in there, Councilman's. It says, I don't believe the county received value to justify sending as many people as we sent.
Okay, then why, why, what uh why don't you think that there was any value in there?
Um so we had a report last time that s- somebody said it's great, everybody should go. Somebody else has a different opinion, I guess. I mean, Counselor Anderson, if you wanna speak to it, but. I mean, everybody who's gone to these things comes back and says. Here's what I learned, here's what I think, I'd recommend going again, or I wouldn't recommend going again, a recommendation to say. We don't wanna send ten people to this, we wanna send two. I mean, differences of opinion, I don't know, do you wanna respond?
Yeah, and just to clarify, I think there's value in the information. I think I would find value in that information whether it was hearing it from you because you attended as my colleague and you brought that information back for the. Entire council to benefit or whether I attended in person. And I just, when I thought of it and the hotel rooms and the mileage and everything for all. Five members of council plus an admin staff to attend. I didn't really think that there was that much benefit in having that, whereas I would have benefited from. You giving me the information as well and not saying that, you know, it was a waste of money and. We should never do it again, just saying that next time I. Would probably look at it and go, okay, you know what? Two of my colleagues are gonna go to this. I look forward to asking them questions when they get back or hearing their report versus. The county spending the money to send. Five of us and uh just building trust in our colleagues that. Two could attend. And we can hear that information, we will all benefit from that information without having to pay for. Five to attend the information and and because if we if five attend this one, then maybe we don't have five attending the next one. Um but if two can attend everyone, to me, that's great. So and I actually grabbed an extra book when I was at the event to bring it home, just in case anybody else wanted to look at it too because. The information was valuable, but my attendance wasn't necessarily required to have that information.
I think uh if if I can rebut on that, I think. I think one counselor stating that uh. That it wasn't a good. Wasn't a good thing that all the all the counselors went and and one human resource manager. I think it was very good to have the human resource manager there. It's all its employee law. I I'm I. I'm pretty sure this whole council would have learned a lot. At the at the beginning of our term, if we would have had this prior to the beginning of our term. I know one thing would have been different and and that's never gonna leave my my mind and uh and uh. But. I don't know, I just I just have a, I I just have a hard time with the information that was presented of you, you didn't believe that there. That there was enough value for the county to have us all there. I just, I don't, I just don't like them remarks. I think, I don't think they needed to be in a. In a report, I think uh an RFD would have went a lot better, an RFD with with uh. An idea of, okay, I think we should only start sending so many people to these seminars um. Then to sit there and say. There was no value in it.
Councillor um Anderson, if you wanna follow that up, then Councillor Holland then to cap it on it.
Thank you. I just wanna point out that I asked for this item to be added to our agenda. When it came to our meeting. Um there wasn't actually support initially to ha- to send somebody. I had to ask. For council's permission to attend. Um so quite honestly, I wouldn't have attended myself had I known that more of my colleagues were gonna go and. I wanted to provo- provide the most value from my attendance. Which is why I submitted a written report and I look forward to the written reports from the other counselors that attended, I guess.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I have to agree. I was um a little insulted as well when it came to mentioning, do not believe the county received enough value. Not only insulting to our council, but insulting to Reynolds and Mirth. Um I believe that the seminar that they put together was amazing. I think that it was beneficial and and would have hoped everyone would have attended. The motion actually mentioned to approve all members of council to attend. And so um I found it, found it really disheartening to see that. The motion was not being supported. And I believe that that's part and parcel of what we are supposed to do. When a motion is passed, we are supposed to, as a council, support that motion. So. I'm I'm disappointed in also in reading that. I think that all law seminars are something that all councils should go. Not everybody is able to go to all the breakout sessions. They have different breakout sessions at different times. Um. I find that everybody learns differently and takes away something different. We gave those reports, our our verbal reports were given at the. At the Cal Committee, so I I I don't expect to see a written one coming out now.
Coach Capitonic, then tell Sir Chams.
I would just like to um uh maybe just. Uh point out that in the future, if we wanna look at a council um at some of the models of our our neighboring municipalities where. We choose uh based on an individual budget, what our training and seminars will be, that might be something that um. I don't know, would be really, this would apply to, I think. It would be like, you know, whether. Whether you feel it's super valuable and I don't, wouldn't matter because you could choose to go and under that budget and I could choose to not go. That might avoid a lot of these questions and feelings. Saying.
Coach Chams, the floor is yours.
Um while I respect uh other people's opinions of it, I personally found uh a lot of value in it too. Uh the importance of liabilities, you know, financial implications. Um and just having that residual uh knowledge within house, you know, one person picks up one thing more so than the other or a different area. And I think it was uh wonderful. Um I did present a a report in our cow meetings, but if you would like. Me to write a right written report as well, I could do that as well. If that would be your preference.
I think, I think just to bring us back, the reports are reports of committees and things we've done. Um it's okay to have differing points of view and there's nothing wrong with someone saying, I think this was great and we all should go. There's nothing wrong with someone saying, I don't think there's enough there to warrant the spend. That's like, it's, that's why we have nine, that's why we have different views and we sort that out and I think uh. You know, having different outlooks on events that we go to is perfectly reasonable and okay to put in your report, like that's what. What to me has, there's some value in there, saying I didn't think it, I wouldn't go to this a second time. Right, do you like? I've been to events and I went once, I thought, okay, that was, I know that now and I I won't spend the time next year. Now, do you wanna have a final comment so we can get them? Do you want to also move the motion to accept the reports?
Um yes, I will do that, but um I I will say that, you know what, I have attended in the past a conference that on. Making sure that the agenda is fit for more council and not administrative and it's a choice not to go and I would respect any council member to make that decision as well.
So would you like to move that we uh receive the reports for information?
Yes.
Council Chamsak has moved that council receive the reports. For information, all is in favor. That is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. It's now in order to take a motion to enter closed session. Constable Cromwell has moved that we enter closed session. All is in favor. The count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. The count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted.
The Councilor Minz had made a motion to leave closed session at 1:38 PM. Motion was carried unanimously. Related to item 12.1, Councilor Holland had a motion.
Thank you. I'd like to accept the closed session update as information and further to forward this item to the June 29, 2023 County Council meeting for approval.
Thank you, Councilor Holland. Were there any questions or discussions surrounding that topic? Seeing none, we'll call the question on the adoption of the motion to accept the closed session update as information and further to forward this item to the June 29, 2023 County Council meeting for approval. All in favor? Motion carried unanimously. Related to item 12.2, Councilor Capitania had a motion.
I will make a motion to-
Can you use your microphone, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. I will make a motion to direct the CEO to proceed, or sorry, to the council endorse the projects proposed by the CEOs and provide direction for the CEOs to proceed in determining the costs for the recognition projects that have now been identified.
Thank you. Was there any discussion surrounding that topic? No further. Seeing none on the adoption of the motion that council endorses the projects proposed by the CEOs and provide direction for the CEOs to proceed in determining the costs for the recognition projects that have now been identified. Call the question. All in favor? Motion carried unanimously. Related to item 12.3, Councilor Capitania had a motion.
I would like to make a motion to table item 12.3 to the June 27 closed session county council.
29th.
June 29th. Sorry, my mistake.
2023, so.
I was gonna come to work early.
Motion to table item 12.3 to the June 29, 2023 County Council meeting. Call the question. All in favor? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, and we will adjourn this meeting at 1:48 PM.
And we will commence the CEO conference briefing immediately.
Okay.